Welcome to our City Commission meeting. We'll start with prayer from Braden Friday from Living Water Ministries, followed by the pledge led by General McQueen. Please rise.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for another opportunity to come before your presence. We thank you for your love and kindness and grace and your wisdom. We thank you for another opportunity to ask you to intervene in the affairs of men. Father, I pray for your wisdom, your knowledge, your understanding concerning all areas of this city and the things that govern this city, that you would instruct our leaders, God, give them divine insight regarding the things that they need to do. Father, and bless the citizens, Lord, and bless us all that we might stand together as one, one united city, God, pursuing your will and your purposes. In the name of your son, Jesus, we thank and praise you, decreeing by faith that they're done. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jan, would you call the roll, please, ma'am?
Mayor Bernicki.
I'm here.
Commissioner Rader.
Here.
Commissioner Street.
Here.
Commissioner Halagus.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Very good. We have the minutes from our July 12th meeting. Everyone on the dais had a chance to read those. Any additions, deletions to those minutes? If not, entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Good morning, Mayor. I don't have any additions or deletions. As you've mentioned, they look fine to me, so I'd like the approval of the minutes for the July 12th, 2022 City Commission meeting.
Second to motion, Mayor.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Generals, are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, draw your attention to item 10L, which is the consideration of the public-private partnership response for the development of property located at 1300 Beck Avenue, 1306 Beck Avenue, and 1309 Chestnut Avenue.
Okay, do I hear a motion to add 10L?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
Lieutenant Richard Finch began his career with the Panama City Fire Department on July 9th, 2002. He was promoted to driver, engineer on August 8th, 2006. He was promoted to fire lieutenant on December 1st, 2015. His education and training include associate's degree in fire science, state-of-Florida pump operator, state-of-Florida fire officer, state-of-Florida instructor, one, state-of-Florida live-fire-training instructor, state-of-Florida emergency medical technician, and self-contained breathing apparatus technician. Lieutenant Finch displays good leadership skills. He has a positive impact on his crew, the fire department, and the community. He is a member of the fire department's urban search and rescue team. He serves as the lead member of the fire apparatus committee. He is a fire standards and training instructor for Chipola College. So today, we are going to honor Mr. Finch with a plaque of 20 years dedicated service to the city of Panama City. Let's give him a hand. Double duty. Chief Kent Taylor began his career with the Panama City Fire Department as a firefighter trainee on July 16th, 2002. He became a certified firefighter on February 25th, 2003. He was promoted to driver, engineer on July 5th, 2005. Was promoted to fire lieutenant April 17th, 2007. He was promoted to the fire captain on August 9th, 2011. He was promoted to the battalion chief on May 13th, 2014, division chief of fire prevention and public education on October 1st, 2016. He was promoted to assistant chief on August 1st, 2019, and he was interim fire chief from July 2020 to November 2020. His education includes master's degree in public administration with a minor in emergency services management, bachelor's degree in fire science, associate's degree in fire science, state-of-Florida pump operator, state-of-Florida fire officer, one and two, fire instructor, three, state-of-Florida fire inspector, one and two, state-of-Florida fire investigator, state-of-Florida live-fire-training instructor.[437.12][437.12](LAUGHTER) You got a lot. I'm glad this is only 20 years. Chief Taylor displays good leadership skills. He has a positive impact on the fire department and the community. He served as a fire standards and training instructor for Gulf Coast State College. He's a member of the Florida Fire Chiefs Association, the Florida Fire Marshals and Inspectors Association, and Society for Human Resource Management. Today, we honor Mr. Kent Taylor with 20 years of service to the city of Panama City Fire
Don't get back to work. Just kidding.
That's great.
Trying to get out. Good thing Jared's got big hair. Yeah. But I do too, so. I try to do theirs.
Yes.
Yes.
(LAUGHTER)
I laugh every time you say there's a general, like, it's cute. Apparently. Actually, but if you have a bigger crowd.
Has wonderful awards. Absolutely. Wonderful, I'm sorry. Very deserving.
For those of you that don't know, during the time that we had those horrific fires a couple months ago, these guys didn't stop and gals. It was, I got out there and watched. I was only a spectator, but let me tell you, wow. I was extremely impressed.
Impressive.
We have notice of term expiration of the Board of Trustees for the Supplemental Retirement Plan for Designated General Employees. We still do not have anyone that has applied. Is that right? So now that we've got more people here today, if you are interested, or you know someone that's interested, please get in touch with Janet City of Panama City. Amendment to the Board of Trustees for Retirement Plan and Trust for General Employees of the City of Panama. I already read that. No, that was supplemental. All right, how about for this one? Do we have one for that?
Yeah, we're ready to.
All right, good.
Excuse me.
Okay. All right, the Board of Trustees Retirement Plan and Trust for General Employees of the City of Panama City has a position two-year term. Please advise that current member Tiffany Hines has expressed an interest in remaining on the board. Do I hear a motion for Tiffany?
I would like to move approval if she's willing to stay on board. I think that's wonderful.
Second to motion, Mayor.
Discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, City of Panama City helps sponsor Genarius Robinson's Win Within Florida and Football and Cheer Camp, July 9th, at Tommy Oliver Stadium. More than 250 kids attended the camp and were able to meet and learn from college and NFL coaches and players. City of Panama City partnered with the Department of Defense and STEM NOLA program to provide a camp for students in grades three through eight, July 11th through July 14th. Students learned about chemistry, biology, environmental science, and technology through various projects. Over 20 participants attended Sunset Yoga at Oaks by the Bay, July 14th. This free class is co-sponsored by the City of Panama City and Florida Blue. We're taking it back to nature this summer with Sunrise Yoga, running bi-weekly until August 17th at Asbell Park, and Weekly Sunset Yoga until August 25th at Oaks by the Bay. This year, the City of Panama City is teaming up with Florida Blue to connect mind, body, and soul in relaxing green space. More information about this program, go to panamassity.gov. Be sure to join the Panama City Police Department, City of Panama City, on National Night Out August 2nd, from 5:00 to 8:00. Come out, meet your local first responders and other groups and organizations who serve our community. Grab your neighbors, family, and friends, and come out for free refreshment swag and first responder demonstrations. This year's event will be held at Gulf Coast State College. City of Panama City is partnering with Community Bank to provide a community credit financial workshop. This workshop is open to anyone 18 years and older looking to build or enhance their credit. There will be two opportunities to participate, August 2nd at Davenport and November 3rd at Oakland Terrace Park, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We're excited to announce Phase One of MLK Recreation Center Revitalization has finally arrived. Beginning August 8th, demolition crews will begin dismantling the hurricane-damaged center in preparation with construction of the new state-of-the-art facility. We appreciate everyone's patience as we continue to navigate this progression. We look forward to the launch of this historic initiative and welcome the opportunities. The new and improved center begins to this vibrant city, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This time, I want to, if you indulge me for a minute, I wanted to give you just a little bit more color on our situation with the Civic Center. I know if you watch the news, if you read the paper, General McQueen gave some very pertinent comments about what went on with that situation, and the city continues to fight for its citizens in this regard. I do not, first of all, I do not want to cast any aspersions on the state of Florida. Their response has been stellar. They have come to our aid, our representatives and senators from this area in the state have come in and done, and funded, and done a magnificent job for us, given us the opportunity to do things. I cannot say the same for FEMA. As far as I'm concerned, the F in FEMA does not stand for friendly. We had situations occur, and I guess I should have and probably did think about it that day and didn't say anything because I wanted to trust the process, but the first time that anyone from FEMA talked to us about the Civic Center was December the 12th, two months and two days after the storm. And the first thing out of their mouth was, "We are severely understaffed, and you need to take all the preparations and hire the people that you need to, to the engineering and assessments on that particular building because we can't." Now, I run a business, and I have to stay staffed. Two months and two days, we had 62 days to get staffed to take care of a hurricane that was the second worst to hit the Gulf Coast in God knows how many years. But they weren't staffed. Could you got staffed in 62 days? I'm sure she could. She runs a business. So from that point forward, I started questioning different things that were going on, but we trusted the process. Our staff worked tirelessly to get all of the reports and things that we needed to be able to prove our case, and was given the impression from them that it looked very, very good. But because of such an archaic process, you know, time heals. It's been almost four years. Out of sight, out of mind. An organization that supposedly has to deal with a disaster every six days, and they ain't staffed. Makes you think, doesn't it? So we go through this archaic process of, yes, this is good, no, this isn't good. And just when we get to the point that we feel like we're over the finish line, someone who represents an organization that works for FEMA finds a way to say no. They are the organization that looks at things and says, "Let me figure out a way not to say yes." So we continue the process, hire more lawyers and consultants to do things to make sure that we can take care of our citizens in the city of Panama City, and we end up going before three administrative judges, four years after the storm. Time heals. I'm in the funeral business. I've seen it, okay? But out of sight, out of mind, we get in there, and one of these people gives us a report that repeats all of the things that the general and our staff have been saying since the get-go. Two of them disagree. I mean, out of three people, how could one person give this complete report that explains everything, and the other two fall on the hat of, "We could have done more in the very beginning." Okay? We should have done more to protect the building. They never set foot, remember I said December 12th, 62 days? They never set foot on the property till April 21st, 30 months later. And you know, we had emergency services and expenses, and we spent, they still owe us from those expenses that we've already had to pay for, they still owe us $18 million because they're real responsive. I'm not going to sit down with this situation with the Civic Center. We're going to continue to fight. We're going to find the funds to do what we need to do, but they let us down. Many of those people in that organization, instead of doing their job, they're trying to keep their job. And that's the way they work. And that's not the way that you get things done. The friendliest people in the world show up from FEMA first, and as we go along, and this is still going to stay rated G because I haven't used any of the words that I wanted to make it R, as we went along, they got less and less friendly. And it gets to the point now that, you know, we're hearing, they get to the point, they keep passing the buck until now it goes in front of this administrative judge, who had nothing to do with anything that went on. But I will tell you, the FEMA people, and correct me, General, if I'm wrong, they showed up for that April 21st testing that we did to reprove what happened to the Civic Center, and they were in awe. They said, "Oh, my goodness." Okay? And we thought we'd won. And we didn't, but we're not done. All of us up here and all of staff will continue to fight and do everything we can. I've read a few comments from people that hide behind the keyboard on Facebook and whine like little children, "We should have done this, and we should have done that." Okay? Well, yeah, maybe so. But we're going to work. I'll make that pledge to you. That's it.
Okay, we'll have audience participation.
This time, I'm going to call people to the dais. Now, this is going to be for things that are not on the agenda today, so if you're here to speak on something on the agenda, then you don't come up now. First person I've got listed is Neil Stewart.
I'm waiting for the agenda.
All right, how about Deanne Pedersen?
Deanne Pedersen, I'm waiting for the agenda.
For the agenda, okay. All right, Bob Stapleton, Bob, you here? Okay.
Sure. Any opportunity to speak to the Catholic audience now without the power of school teaching?
I was thinking the same thing about the fire department. I'm like, what a great audience for them today.
Yeah. That's awesome.
I even wrote some, Bob Stapleton, 542 South Bonita. I have gotten the sense from paying attention to social media that there's a move afoot to close my boat ramp at the marina, so I had some thoughts on it, and this saved the boat ramp talk. And I'm going to read you a post that I put on Facebook in response to this. My sense is that the Panama City Commissioners want to close the boat ramp. There must be people pushing for this. Yeah? That's the ticket. Citizens want to close the boat ramp, free up all that space for retail shops, maybe even compete with Sandestin. We could save some parking for the big yachts in the basin. Let's make it no vessels under 50 feet, and charge them big time. Think of all the revenue we can bring in. Maybe some sheiks and oligarchs will bring their yachts here. We can charge them anything, big money. I'm just getting started on how rich with the blank canvas of our marina we can get, but a couple of mill for a blue-ribbon study could probably best me on ideas for maximizing the profit. Just think of how all the citizens of Panama City will benefit from this approach. Thank God. Help me with this. All of this is going to improve our quality of life? What happened to our marina? Maybe the blank canvas could be painted with a vision of what our marina used to be, or even improved. A marina where we could walk around or sit by the bay and enjoy the view. Launch our boats at an improved ramp with adequate launch and recovery docking and ample parking. Maybe some people could rent a boat slip for less than a mortgage payment, get fuel, bait, ice, tackle, maybe some nice sporting, appropriate merchandise. Maybe they could go fishing, even from that nice fishing pier that was once planned before the hurricane. I really think the citizens of Panama City could do a fantastic job of completing my vision of what should be painted on this canvas, or we could go with that first option and maximize the profit.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Jan?
Bring to your attention item 7A, consideration to authorize the city manager to negotiate a three-year agreement with the audit firm Tipton, Marler, Garner, and Chastain to provide independent audit services for the city for the fiscal years 2022 through 2024, with two one-year extension options, and authorizing the mayor to execute the successfully negotiated contract. As background information for this item, on February 8th, 2022, the City Commission authorized the establishment of an audit committee pursuant to Florida statutes, Chapter 218 dot 391, to perform the auditor selection procedures. Request for proposals, PC 22 dash 016, was issued with an original due date of May 19th, 2022. The city received two responses to the RFP. The city reissued the RFP to a wider audience with a due date of June 3rd, 2022, and received two additional responses. The Audit Committee reviewed the submittals and met on July 6th, 2022. The committee was unanimous in its decision to recommend the audit firm Tipton, Marler, Garner, and Chastain to provide the needed services. This is the city's current audit firm. Staff recommends authorization for the city manager to negotiate a contract and the mayor to execute the contract.
Your motion on 7A.
Mayor, I'd like to move approval of that staff recommendation to use Tipton, Marler, Garner, and Chastain audit team.
Your second?
Second to motion, Mayor.
Discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero. I'd like to thank the Audit Committee, Mayor Bernicki, Mayor Henderson, and Mayor Nelson for their assistance.
We're welcome. General?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I draw your attention to item 8A, which is the final reading of ordinance 3068.1, voluntary annexation of 15 acres approximately of property at Frankfurt Avenue, parcel ID number 13037-000-000. As background information, the opinion is requesting to annex to the sea along with future land use and zoning change to develop the parcel into an apartment complex. This item was reviewed by the Planning Board on May 9th, 2022, and the Planning Board recommended denial unanimously at the June 28th, 2022, meeting with the City Commission. The City Commission voted to continue the item to the July 26th, 2022, public hearing. With that, it's the recommendation to conduct the final reading of the ordinance.
Mr. City Attorney, would you like to read the ordinance, or would you like us to have public comment first?
We can have a comment, but I'd like a couple of things to point out. Thank you. Since the last meeting, there have been discussions with the developer, Robert Browning, who is here, and his attorney, William Harrison, have approached city staff with a proposal for the City Commission to consider, if they would like to. And that is that they are willing to offer up restrictive covenants, and these restrictive covenants would run in favor of the city, and restrictive covenants would have things like in it, like height, limit the heights to three stories. It would have density, it would have other provisions, and the restrictive covenants would not become effective unless the city chose to annex the property. This was, is an answer to some of the comments that have been made by the community surrounding that. The other idea that they had was, well, maybe rather than restrictive covenants, a different zoning classification would be more appropriate, and they have written a letter and proposes, I think it's MU, is it MU3?
Three.
MU3, which is not as intensive as the proposed zoning. If the City Commission desires to work on that or allow the developer to come or allow the developer to come back with these proposals, there's a couple of different options. Legally, the developer can come at the meeting and make a proposal to restrict his project voluntarily, and the commission could, could accept that. Also, the city has had past history of sending requests like that back to the Planning Commission to get the Planning Commission's input on anything like that. So there's, there's flexibility, but whatever, if the commissioners want to consider that, I would recommend that you not take action today, that you defer taking action until a later time, and then determine whether it should go back to the Planning Commission, whether you're, you'd be willing to have it come back to the City Commission at some point in August. So that is what is before you. So you have the initial request, and now you have a modification of that initial request from Mr. Browning that would limit the intensity.
Comments?
Well, I, I, I think it's fair and consistent that we vote today on this zoning. And then if they want to come back with another zoning, that they have to go through the planning process just because we've done that for every single person we've had or applicant this, this year at least.
I'm not one to pass the buck, but I don't want to do someone else's job either. I got enough jobs.
Mayor, can I, can I speak?
Yes, sir.
Were you, were you finished, Commissioner Halagus? I'm sorry.
Oh, you know me, I'll just jump in and out. You're good.
Okay. First of all, thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. And, and thank you, Mr. Browning and Inlet Properties for being willing to come back with a different option. And that, that's, that's compromise is important. But I'm the commissioner of Ward 3, which is where it sits. It borders Josh's ward and my, my ward. We've, so we've seen so much growth in that area at Airport Road and 390 with Sweet Bay and other things. And I have received an overwhelming amount of calls, text messages, emails from constituents and people in the county that can't even vote. But you know, they're our, they're, they're our community. And someday, those people in the county might be living in the city. We don't know. So while everyone recognizes the need for apartments, I think we can all agree with that. We see it. We have the need for housing, you know? But there's a thing about the location. That's what it comes down to, for me. And I've been in this since April 29th. I received a call to go to a so-called town hall meeting at Grace Presbyterian Church, and I went. And it wasn't a fun, it wasn't really a fun evening. Some of you were there. What I'm going to say as of today, I cannot support option 1 or option 2. But I'm just one person. I'm one vote. So what I'm going to do, I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion to deny the annexation on 8A. Now, if, if they want to come back to us with a different plan, they have a right to do that. If they want to come back to us and say, we want to build 35 or 30 single-family dwellings, they have a right to do that. Like I say, I'm one man. I'm just one person. I'm common sense. I'm nobody fancy. But that's my feeling, and I've heard from a lot of people. So I'm, that's where I'm at.
And I will second your motion to deny.
Thank you, Jenna.
Any discussion?
Yes. I believe that we, if we have a motion and a second, it would be incumbent to request the applicant, if the applicant would wish to address the City Commission.
I guess anybody, right?
Yeah, well, I would like, Mr. Browning, would you like to come up and address this?
Thank you very much, Commissioners, for hearing our project here. And yes, we certainly will.
Excuse me, can you state your name and address?
Yes, Robert W. Browning, 2451 Southeast Gulfwood Drive, Stewart, Florida 34996.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I mean, we came here, as Mr. Raeder mentioned, in April, after having met with both the city manager and the Planning Department at that time about this project and came in and were very forthright in showing what our plans were. I still am of the belief that this is very much a needed project in this area. And that it's really, you have all the utilities and everything there to execute on this already. This is, is a changing and evolving neighborhood. And you have six different zoning classifications within the city that abut this site. U R 1, which is just to the north of it, is almost exactly what we're requesting in the modified zoning request. Almost exactly. And yet, we're totally being shot down here, and we've come here in good faith to try and deal with this city. We've dealt with a planner that left. I've come here and met with almost the new planner, the manager, and anybody else who wanted to talk to us. And we're being tossed out here for an excellent A-class project that is much needed. It would be the only elevator-served project in all the city for an apartment, giving your residents another option and providing an awful lot of property tax in your area. And again, all you're doing is just passing the buck and basically saying, not in my backyard. And I understand that. It's certainly yours and the neighborhood's decision to make. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Browning.
Yeah, I would, I would like to add that I'm sorry for his frustration, because I, I can imagine. I mean, it's tough, and we have a lot of staff to go through and a lot of questions. And it could be at the time it appeared to be something different or whatever. And I do, I, I do, I do feel sorry for him for that. But I have stood at this dais for years and stood with the same thing every time. When people make, for some people, their homes are their greatest investment and the only return that they have. And you, you don't know this because you don't live here, and I wouldn't expect you to know that. But it's, it's about the fact that it's, most of these people, it's their greatest, greatest investment. And when you, I have no, no, I feel not bad at all for people who buy next to commercial and then come up here and get upset with us that we're allowing commercial because we're like, it's zoned that way, you knew that when you bought it. For these people, and like, like, like Billy said, I mean, the funny part about this is a lot of these people aren't voters. They live in the county. But it's about the fact of respect for somebody who buys something with R1 zone next to them, believing that they're not going to have even three stories. I mean, a normal house at the most would be two. So if there were townhouses, sorry if y'all don't like townhouses, but if it were that, I'd say, you know what? That kind of multi-use. And part of this is what the seller wants. Part of this is that as a businessman, I mean, he can't certainly build single-family homes for that price and make any money. So I don't blame you at all. But this isn't about, this is about protecting someone's great when they bought something and they expected it to be that behind them. So no matter what we usually vote on, I have stuck to that. I, I really believe that. And so I'm sorry for your frustration, but I've been that way ever since I've been up here. So. Go ahead.
Excuse me, William Harrison, 101 Harrison Avenue for the applicant. There is a document that I gave to Nevin that hopefully is passed out or is in the process. Jen, I understand what you're saying. I want to show you some examples that are contrary to what your, your opinions that you just stated. And if you look at these, and there are a number of examples around the city, these are just a handful. Some of these are in the Cove, on Cherry Street, on Maslina Bow. If you flip through these, you're going to see actions some by this exact commission. For example, at Beach Drive, where you approved on the, the Tivit property, two five-story condominiums that is across the street from Single Family Residential.
You talking about the Buccaneer?
No, I'm talking about the discernia property at the base of the bridge. So that's two five-story that are across the street from Single Family Residential in Second Court. If you look at the, the first page that, that I gave you, those are two-story apartments, and the distance right in the middle of the page from Single Family Residential is about 50 feet.
So that's two-story?
It is two-story, but it's 50 feet right, right in the backyard, 50 feet from the, the bedroom window of Single Family Residential. If you look at the Sherman Avenue, 11th Street, which some of you approved, that is also five-story across the street from Single Family Residential. If you look on the third page, that is Nantucket across Nevin's office, which is a three-story condominium, which is less than 100 feet from the corner of that house that you, you see right there in the middle of the page. The next page is the one that I referred to, the discernia Tivit property. And then the one over on Cherry Street, which is the Bay Club, which is three stories, which is less than 100 feet from Single Family Residential and in several different locations. So this is an opportunity for the city to be able to move 15 acres of infill property into the city limits, which is consistent with the city's strategy. If we had this discussion 12 months or 24 months from now, it would be a completely different environment. You're fixing to change the roadway. You're fixing to approve Phase 3 of Sweet Bay. You have an apartment complex that I don't know whether it's two or three-story, also in Frankfurt, that's fixing to be approved. And so this area is changing from what used to be a crosswind runway to a, a, an emerging area. Utilities are going to be changed, water and sewer, that is initiative of the city. And the city, you have accepted a $24 million grant to change stormwater for that area, which is one of the major concerns. Traffic is a hassle. I understand that. I'm dealing with that in my office. All of that's going to change when construction is complete. So if we had this conversation in '23, late '23, completely different environment. So rather than stop the process right now, there needs to be conversations about how all this can work. And I would appreciate your support of that and your understanding that the, the approval of this commission all over this city and for the last 30 years is consistent with what we're asking for. And we can deal with, with vegetative buffers, we can deal with setbacks, we can deal with traffic, stormwater. All of these issues, we can deal with. You have dealt with them before. Your staff has dealt with them before. We want the opportunity to do that on this project, which is consistent with what you're trying to do in that area.
William, are y'all ready? Are y'all willing to do R2?
I'll let him speak to that. But I don't want to design this. You've been in this situation before. I don't want to design it.
And by the way, I didn't vote on the discernia property. I wasn't here when they changed it to multifamily. But I don't disagree with it. I like it, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Robert, you want to speak?
Just so the community knows what R2 is, that would be like townhouses or could do duplexes. You can't do it, you couldn't do higher than, than two stories.
Well, what we put forth to Nevin was either we would do some conditions on the existing or an MU 3, which again, MU 3 is already in the neighborhood on Frankfurt Avenue surrounding this site.
But that's three stories, right?
It allows for three stories, but so does U R 1, which is our abutting neighbor. That's also three stories. Sweet Bay is three stories with $700,000 of commercial.
Yeah, they have a lot of 390 franchise, though. It's not quite the same thing to me. But anyway.
Okay, so.
I'd like to say.
Any other discussion?
You want to talk about anything?
Yeah, Josh.
Yeah, so I, I definitely, you guys can sit down at this point unless there's anybody that's got any more questions.
We're not, we're not, we'll be there in a minute, I promise you.
We're good.
Yep.
So one of the, one of the tensions that, you know, even William and in your examples, I think the difference is how much the communities come out in opposition. And so in all of these examples, typically it went through with little to no. This has been a very contentious dialogue for the last two, three months. And, you know, I do appreciate, and I do want to point this out to still, I said this last time, developers rarely tip their hand to what they want to build. Typically, they come in and they say, I want the zoning, and that's it. So I, I commend the response that you guys have given. I would more than support a project in another area, but I don't want you guys to waste any more money. So end time. And, and I think that's what the sense I'm getting with the rest of the commission and the community at large. And it is very unfortunate that we couldn't make this project work. I think what Jenna's tipping to is possibly an R2. You know, I'd, I'd be willing to consider some type of mixed-use, you know, proposal. But I think that as far as from a consensus standpoint, I can't speak for everyone, but I don't want you guys to waste any more time. And because time is money. And I'm sure you have great projects around the country and maybe in the community to do. And so, you know, if we end up in a vote, then I think that's what I would, that's what I would propose.
Well, here's the thing, I mean, we, we don't.
I wish I had something for you downtown.
The, the, the public and the Planning Commission, this needs to go to before. We're not going to sit here and try this today. I mean, I'm sorry, I got to get on a plane at 11:30, but still, we, we, we can't go through and try all this now. Okay? And we have motion and second. I think that you take it back before the Planning Commission, present it to them. Maybe they can, you can get some acceptance from the community and them, and then bring it back to us. So is there any other discussion? Got a motion and second to deny?
I just, I just want to add that with Josh, I don't, out of respect for you, I just want to make sure you know that like anything higher than two stories, it's just, for me, in that particular location, I've been over there several times. I just, I just can't.
Yeah, this, this commission. This commission has had other situations where they, an applicant was denied, and then they went back with a new application. So there's nothing here that would preclude the applicant from going back with a new application for a different type of zoning.
Okay, call the roll.
Commissioner Raeder, this is a motion to deny.
Yes.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
No.
And Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes forward as one.
And what, what has occurred is that the commission voted to deny the requests for annexation. Because the request for annexation has been denied, it renders moot really do, dealing with the next two items, which was to amend the future land use map and then also to amend the zoning map. So 8A has been denied. 8B and 8C are, are moot. And so the next item would be 8D.
With that, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I draw your attention to item 8D, which is the final reading of ordinance 3077.1, voluntary annexation of .68 acres of property located at 208 West Baldwin Road, Panama City, Florida. As background information, this applicant is requesting an annexation, future land use change and a rezoning to utilize city services. This item was reviewed by the Planning Board on June 13th, 2022, and the Planning Board recommended approval unanimously. With that, it's the recommendation we conduct the final reading of the request for annexation.
This is a public hearing?
Commissioner, if I could, address this issue on Baldwin Road. I included a letter in your. I included a letter in your packet.
Yes.
The letter had to do with restrictive covenants, Mr. Buell Harper had provided us with a copy of the restrictive covenants. What the letter indicates is that the city commission itself is not the enforcer of restrictive covenants. Those are private contract rights between all of the owners, or all of the owners of the property that are subject to those restrictive covenants. So the criteria for whether or not a city, the city should rezone this property, annex and then zone it, is listed there in your letter, and it's, real quickly, it will not degrade level of service standards, it's in harmony with the general intent to the comp plan, will not exceed traffic limitations, cause fire hazard or other public health, welfare and safety problem, and it's compatible with adjacent land uses. However, you may consider the fact that this property does have a restrictive covenant that says that this property and the community was intended to be residential, but that is, that fact does not control how the city staff makes recommendations to you. But it's a fact, just like all facts, that you can consider. So I know Mr. Harper had raised this issue, and we wrote a letter and wanted to address that.
Okay. Want to read it first, or we have Mr. Harper speak?
Well, probably have Mr. Harper speak, and then we can see.
Buell? Name and address, please.
I live at three fourteen West Baldwin Road, I'm in the area where these restrictions and covenants were put on the property that we own. Can I address all three of these at one time, or is that a no-no?
Oh, that's fine.
The annexation, the zoning?
Yes.
Yes. I think it makes sense to address all three, Mr. Harper, I mean, the first question is whether or not to annex, but obviously, the decision to annex is going to be driven by zoning issues.
I have- That is ten of the thirteen property owners on Baldwin Road that face each other in the area that this request is being made. One of them is Childress, her house was torn up during the storm, and she no longer lives there, couldn't get a hold of her. One guy would not participate, he didn't want to be involved. The other lady, she worked some really unusual hours, and I could not find her. The only reason that I and any of the others would object to annexation in the city is changing the zoning. Now, I wish I could say everything that you just said about those of us that have lived on Baldwin Road for a long time, and here we are, we're going to go to, what is it? MU3, three stories, in a single-family area of residence, and that's our objection, is not that you go on annex, but the individual can't do what he wants to do without the annexation. I disagree with Nevin, that covenants, restrictions and other agreements that run with the land, I've been dealing with land for a long time, as y'all know, and we've always recognized that if it enters something, it says, it runs with the land, and it runs with the land. Thank you.
Can I ask what is being proposed to be built?
We don't know.
You can't do that, that's, I know, that's, and I've said-
It's not supposed to matter.
I know, I know, I know, that's, that's just me.
Doesn't mean that's what's going to go there, that's why it doesn't matter.
That's true, yeah.
Okay.
It's always the fear of the unknown.
Anyone else want to speak on this issue?
I understand.
Just to point out, we have, Mr. Harper provided letters from, looks like eight, I think, ten, ten individuals that appear to be owned lots that have the restrictive covenant. The restrictive covenant, it says it's to be used as residential property, talks about it running with the land for twenty-five years and being extended for ten-year periods, and then it says enforcement shall be by proceedings at law or in equity against any person or persons violating or attempting to violate any covenant, either to restrain violation or to recover damages. So we have this, this was provided by Mr. Harper.
Mr. City Attorney, is that a deed restriction?
It is a deed restriction.
Nevin, if I could ask one question, who is the enforcement arm for deed restrictions?
The court.
Would, I have a question, is mixed use, which could be residential, it's a different kind of residential, could that not be still done?
Yeah, it's not, even though you, I mean, you could build a house in residential, then, I mean, in mixed use, and then there would not be an issue with these covenants.
Right, but a mixed use could also be an apartment complex, which is not a single-family-
Right, so if there is an apartment complex, then the owners that have these restrictive covenants, covenants, could determine whether or not to enforce their rights through court to keep that individual from actually building the apartment complex.
To follow up on that same statement, the same goes for R1, there are provisions that allow for businesses to operate in R1, and it could be considered a violation even in that.
A neighborhood business would be in violation of the covenants, the way I just read it, because it's not a residential use. So it's, zoning is obviously important, but it's not, it's the actual use of the property that would make it run contrary to the restrictive covenants.
Yes, ma'am.
Janet Harper, three fourteen West Baldwin Road. When you read the last part about any attempt, would you read that again?
Any attempt.
Any attempt to violate?
Oh, enforcement? Says enforcement shall be by proceedings at law or in equity against any person or persons violating or attempting to violate any covenant, either to restrain violation or to recover damages.
Would that include the city?
No, ma'am. Not at all. The city's not building a house, the city just does zoning.
The city would allow it, but there would be no repercussion?
Not against, it's my opinion, it's my opinion, that there are no repercussions against the city.
That wouldn't be mine.
Yeah, well, I understand.
Okay, there's, do we have a motion and second? We do not.
No.
Okay, so the staff recommendation is to approve the annexation request. Do I hear a motion to approve or to take staff recommendation?
I'll make a motion. So what they're saying, correct, so very familiar with deed restrictions, it's just not our job to determine what that is. And so, mixed use allows for residential, allows for other things, same thing with residential, so I feel comfortable moving forward with the annexation. So I'll make a motion for annexation.
All right, do I hear a second?
I'll second it, ma'am.
Okay, any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Raeder?
No.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
No.
Commissioner Brown?
No.
Mayor Bernicki?
No.
Motion fails, four to one.
Okay, what we have is a failure on the motion to annex, and because of the failure on the motion to annex, which is eight D, then there is no reason to consider eight E or eight F, which dealt with the comprehensive plan change, and then also zoning. So eight D failed on the request for annexation.
With that, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I draw your attention to item eight G, which is the final reading of ordinance three zero seven eight point one, which is the voluntary annexation of point three zero acres of property located at thirteen eleven West Thirtieth Street. As background information, the applicant wants to annex into the city and split the lot into two fifty by one thirty-two lots for single-family residential homes. The item was reviewed by the planning board on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, and the planning board recommended approval unanimously. With that, it's the recommendation we conduct the final reading of the ordinance for annexation.
This one's easy.
Your motion on thirty seventy-eight point one?
Anybody else?
Move approval.
I'll second that.
Discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
The commission has adopted ordinance thirty seventy-eight point one, an ordinance of the city approving the voluntary annexation of point three zero acres of unincorporated property located at thirteen eleven West Thirtieth Street, Bay County, Florida, into the city, as further defined, amending the wards and boundaries of the city to include said land and providing for an effective date. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just go back quickly, make sure there's no misunderstanding. On eight D, there was a motion to approve annexation, that motion failed. It's my interpretation that we do not have to turn around and vote no, because there was no positive vote for annexation.
Right.
Because we, the item before us, there was actually a vote no on the annexation request, but I just wanted to point out that even though there was no, no vote, there was a failure on the motion to actually annex, so it was not annexed, and it was denied.
Right, yes.
Thank you. With that, moving on to item eight H, which is a final reading of ordinance three zero seven eight point two, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of residential for the property located at thirteen eleven West Thirtieth Street. As background information, it's the same as I shared earlier in the annexation agenda request, and as such, it's the recommendation we conduct the final reading of the ordinance.
Motion on thirty seventy-eight point two?
Move approval.
Second a motion, Mayor.
Discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes four to zero.
Commission has approved ordinance thirty seventy-eight point two, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of residential for a parcel of property located at thirteen eleven West Thirtieth Street, Panama City, providing for repealer, severability and effective date.
Item eight I is a final reading of ordinance three zero seven eight point three, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of residential two, R2 for the property located at thirteen eleven West Thirtieth Street. Background information, it's the same as I shared earlier in the annexation agenda request, and as such, it's the recommendation we conduct the final reading of the ordinance.
Motion on thirty seventy-eight point three?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
Commission has approved ordinance number thirty seventy-eight point three, an ordinance zoning a parcel of property located at thirteen eleven West Thirtieth Street, Panama City, having approximately point three acres, R2, providing for severability and effective date.
Continuing with the public hearing, item eight J, which is the final reading of ordinance three zero seven nine point one, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of mixed use for the property located at five twelve Craft Avenue. As background information, this item was reviewed by the planning board on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, and the planning board recommended approval unanimously. With that, it's the recommendation we conduct the final reading of the ordinance.
Motion on thirty seventy-nine point one? Anybody?
Sure, I'll move a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion?
And as a reminder, this is a public hearing, that's why.
Discussion? Anyone like to address us on this issue? Call the roll.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Commission has adopted ordinance thirty seventy-nine point one, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of mixed use for parcels of property located at five twelve Craft Avenue, providing for repealer, severability and effective date.
Item eight K is a final reading of ordinance three zero seven nine point two, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of mixed use two, MU2 for the property located at five twelve Craft Avenue. As background information, it's the same as I shared earlier in the future land use agenda request, and as such, it's the recommendation we conduct the final reading of the ordinance.
Still continuing the public hearing, your motion on thirty seventy-nine point two?
Move approval, Mayor.
Second a motion, Mayor.
Discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
Commission has adopted ordinance thirty seventy-nine point two, an ordinance zoning parcels of property located at five twelve Craft Avenue, Panama City, having approximately one point one two acres, mixed use two, providing for severability and effective date.
Item eight L is a final reading of ordinance three zero eight zero point one, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of mixed use for the property located at nine zero eight East Sixteenth Street. As background information, this item was reviewed by the planning board on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, and the planning board recommended approval unanimously. With that, it's the recommendation we conduct the final reading of the ordinance.
This is a public hearing, anyone would like to address us on this issue, come forward, give your name and address, dear.
My name is Barbara Minton, nine oh eight East Sixteenth Street, Panama City, Florida. All we want to do is to get the zoning changed, so that in case of a hurricane or anything that we will be able to repeal. Thank you.
I'll move a motion to approve.
I'll second a motion, ma'am.
Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
Nevin?
Commission has approved ordinance thirty eighty point one, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of mixed use for parcels of property located at nine oh eight East Sixteenth Street, Panama City, providing for repealer, severability and effective date.
Item eight M is the final reading of ordinance three zero eight zero point two, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of mixed use three, MU3 for the property located at nine zero eight East Sixteenth Street. As background information, it's the same as I shared earlier in the future land use agenda request, and as such, it's the recommendation we conduct the final reading of the ordinance.
Your motion on thirty eighty point two?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Second.
Discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
Commission has adopted ordinance thirty eighty point two, an ordinance zoning parcels of property located at nine oh eight East Sixteenth Street, Panama City, having approximately point one four acres, mixed use three, providing for severability and effective date.
Item eight N, if you'll bear with me, I'm going to be reading a lot of zeros, but I want to put the parcel numbers in the record the first time, and then I'll just refer to it as a property adjacent to the Martin Luther King property. So with that, item eight N is the final reading of ordinance three zero eight one point one, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of public institutional for the following parcels. One seven three three six dash zero one zero dash zero zero zero. Property one seven three three six dash zero two zero dash zero zero zero.
Here we go again.
Property one seven three three seven dash zero 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 dash zero zero zero. Property one seven three four two dash zero 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 dash zero zero zero. Property one seven three five one dash zero 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 dash zero zero zero. Property one seven three four nine dash zero 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 dash zero zero zero. Property one seven three five two dash zero 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 dash zero zero zero. Property one seven three four seven dash zero 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 dash zero zero zero. Property one seven three four six dash zero 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 dash zero zero zero. And property one seven three four five dash zero 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 dash zero zero zero. As background information, this item was reviewed by the planning board on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, and the planning board recommended approval unanimously. With that, it's the recommendation we conduct the final reading of the ordinance.
Just so the public knows, this is just to clean up where the MLK Rec Center is, so it solves a public institution, so, because all the zero, zero, zero-
Your motion on thirty eighty one point one?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Commission has adopted ordinance number thirty eighty-one point one, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of public institutional for parcels of property located at and on the MLK Rec Center with the appropriate parcel numbers identified in the title, Panama City, Florida, providing for repealer severability and effective date.
Item eight O is the final reading of ordinance three zero eight one point two, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of public institutional, PI, for the parcels that I cited earlier in agenda item number eight N, the parcels that are referenced the Martin Luther King Rec Center. With that, background information, the same information was previously stated in the future land use agenda request, and as such, it's the recommendation we conduct the final reading of the ordinance.
Your motion?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Second, Commissioner Brown.
Discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
Commission has adopted ordinance thirty eighty-one point two, an ordinance zoning of parcels of property located in and on the MLK Rec Center with the appropriate parcel numbers identified in the title, having approximately two point five acres, public institutional, providing for severability and effective date.
Okay, we have the consent agenda, nine A, B, and C. Does anyone on the dais want to discuss those separately at depth? If not, would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Your second?
I'll second.
Discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
General?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item ten A is the consideration to approve a budget amendment and resolution number two zero two two zero seven two six point one for a loan from First Federal Bank in the amount of one million, seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-six cents to complete the purchase for an aerial platform from ten eight and a fire engine from Rosenbauer. As background information, on June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, City, Panama City finalized a loan with First Federal Bank in the amount of one million, seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-six cents. This funding is being utilized to make final pay, full payments for the purchase of an aerial platform, ten, from ten E and a fire engine from Rosenbauer. With that, it's our recommendation to move forward and support this budget amendment and resolution.
Your motion on resolution twenty twenty-two oh seven two six point one?
I move staff recommendation approval.
Second a motion, Mayor.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
Commission has adopted resolution twenty twenty-two oh seven two six point one, a resolution providing for the amendment of the approved fiscal year twenty-one twenty-two budget for a loan for the purchase of an aerial platform, fire truck, and fire engine.
Item ten B is a consideration for budget amendment and acceptance of a grant for the Center for the Arts Restoration Planning, resolution number two zero two two zero seven two six point two, in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. As background information, the products of this one-to-one matching grant of thirty-seven thousand, five hundreds for a total project cost of seventy-five thousand dollars will include a historic structural report, historic research, existing conditions report, and ads built drawings, as well as hundred percent construction drawings and cost estimates to preserve the historic portion of the Center for the Arts, its facade, its lobby, and other attributes of the building. This project is funded by the State of Florida Department of State Division of Historic, Historical Resources and the City of Panama City. This historical preservation study project is scheduled to be completed by June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. With that, it's the recommendation we accept the budget amendment, accept the grant and the corresponding budget amendment and resolution.
Your motion?
Motion to approve. Second a motion, Mayor.
Discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion five, I mean, motion passes five zero.
Commission has approved resolution twenty twenty-two oh seven two six point two, a resolution providing for the amendment of the approved fiscal year twenty-one twenty-two budget for a Florida Department of State Division of Historical Resources for a planning grant with a hundred percent match for restoration of the city for the arts building.
Item ten C is a consideration to set the proposed millage rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-three for the City of Panama City and the Downtown Improvement Board. As background information pursuant to Florida statutes two hundred dash zero six five, subparagraph two B, the commission shall within thirty-five days of certification of value notify the property appraiser of its proposed millage rate maximum to be used on trim notices, the rollback rate, and the date, time, and place of the public hearing to be held to consider the tentative millage rate and the tentative budget. With that, the following proposed millage rates are being recommended for approval as the maximum that it could be. For the general fund, the maximum rate being at this, recommended at this time is four point eight nine nine nine, which is exactly what it is for this year. And then also for the Downtown Improvement Board, it's for three mills, which is exactly what it is for this year. Again, these are the maximum rates, and we'll continue to move forward in the budget process.
So we set the maximum rate as what we, like, no change?
That's right.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Sometimes we get crazy, and then it gets all, looks like we're all going to vote on something else, and okay, thank you.
No change. And we're striving to find, continue with the commitment.
It could go down, it won't go up.
Yeah, it won't go, it won't go higher than what's already there.
Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful, thank you.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second a motion, Mayor.
Anyone like to address us on this issue?
Would you like to pay more taxes?
Call the roll.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item ten D is a consideration of approval of setting the date, time, and meeting place for the tentative budget hearing of the City of Panama City and the Downtown Improvement Board budgets and millage rates. With that, as background information pursuant to Florida statutes two hundred dash, correction, two hundred dot zero six five, subparagraph two B, the commission shall within thirty-five days of certification of value notify the property appraiser of its proposed millage rate maximum to be used on trim notices, rollback rate, and the date, time, and place of the public hearing to be held to consider the tentative millage rate and the tentative budget. With that, the following is the recommendation for setting the dates and times for the budget hearings. First, it would be on Monday, September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, at five oh one P M. here in the Government Center of the Bay County Government Center for, Bay County. And then secondly, on Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, at five oh one P M. Central Daylight Time. Again, both hearings will be held here at the Bay County Government Center in the commission chambers.
Everybody good with that?
Yes, that's the dates for our September meetings.
That's correct.
So I'd like to move approval.
For this purpose?
For the, yeah.
Not the regular scheduled meetings?
No.
This would be the budget meeting?
No, it's not the, yeah, excuse me. I know one of them's a budget, yeah, meeting, yes, I'm sorry. For the, for these two meetings, yes.
You have a motion? Do you have a second?
Second a motion, Mayor.
Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
Item ten E is a consideration of approval for the purchase of in-kind projects in accordance with the consent order, zero, correction, O G C file number nineteen dash eighteen thirty-six relating to the wastewater collection systems and the wastewater treatment facilities in the amount of five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. As background information, on June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, the city received a letter from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection approving the city's in-kind project proposal in lieu of fines to include the following equipment purchases, and the city's proposed, proposal included the following, which was the Rover X video inspection system in the amount of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty cents, smart cover system, remote sewer monitoring system for sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, the data flow system, which is our SCAD monitoring, SCADA monitoring system for the city's lift stations to add an additional eleven lift stations in the amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars, a Godwin bypass pump to be added to the city's emergency response equipment in the amount of one hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars, the hydro scrubber to address the hydrogen sulfide in fats, oils, and greases in the collection system in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and ninety-six cents, and the Casco pond aeration system for fountains for three stormwater retention ponds in the amount of fifteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars. Terms to the City of Panama City's consent orders are to reduce the amount of sanitary sewer overflows by implementing a comprehensive and continuous SSO prevention and control program. With the approval of the proposed packages outlined above, we know that this would add to our ability to have the capacity, the management, and the operation and maintenance of our system and enable us to identify areas of concern more efficient, effectively, and in fact, not only be predictive, but also have a better response. With the replacement of the problem areas found, we can keep the collection system flowing, and the technology has come significantly further advanced and is being used to our advantage, and our goal is to keep, continue to keep this a better community for the City of Panama City and the citizens. With that, it's the recommendation that we approve the purchase of the in-kind projects that I've outlined above.
Your motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Oh, sorry. Did somebody else second?
Yeah, they did.
Okay.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
With that, I move your attention to item ten F, which is the approval of Suite Bay Apartments Phase Two Production Project Conceptual Plan. As background information, in accordance to the application, the project is located on the east side of the Suite Bay Avenue across from the Suite Bay Apartments, Phase One project that is currently under construction. Project is within the Suite Bay Plan Unit Development, and the access, the access connect to the Suite Bay Apartments Phase Two will be from Suite Bay Avenue, which connects to Highway three ninety and is currently under construction. Planning board considered this item on June eleventh, correction, July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, and the request was recommended for approval unanimously. With that, it's the recommendation to approve the conceptual plan.
Motion on ten F?
Move approval.
Second a motion, Mayor.
Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
Item ten G is the St. Andrews Marina A and E Services Change Order Number Two in the amount of sixty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars, which has been done with Moffett Nickel. Background information and consideration is requested for the additional A and E services by Moffett Nickel for the design of the bulkhead repairs and the new utilities for the St. Andrews Marina. Extra work, details, and justification are attached in the PMO's memorandum, but for Moffett Nickel's additional services change order request. In short, what we're striving to do is ensure that the continuous operations of the vessels that are currently in the wet slips at the marina have a place to move to and continue their operations. And so the purpose of this is change order number two with the design team is to ensure that that is designed and constructed so that we can move the vessels to the new location and then do the bulkhead repair where the existing vessels are currently moored.
Motion on ten G?
Absolutely. Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
Item ten H is the Martin Luther King Rec Center A and E Services Contract Change Order Number One in the amount of one hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars to CCR Architects. As background information, this change order is, is being requested for the additional work which was necessary by CCR Architects to complete the design and the construction bid package for the Martin Luther King Recreation Revitalization Project. Extra work was required in order to support this. This is a clearly a time and material event and proposed change order for work that they actually have done to ensure that this project is meeting the needs of our citizens. With that, it's my recommendation that we move forward and accept this change order in the amount, change order number one to CCR Architects in the amount of one hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Motion on ten H?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Second motion.
And for those that are, yeah, for those that are interested, I'll post what all the additional increase. It's, it's quite a bit of work. So I think it's important, it would take me a lifetime to go over it right now, but I will post it if anyone's interested.
I think CCR has done a brilliant job to assist the city in this project, and can't wait to get it underway.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
Item ten I is the site selection for the new Performing Arts and Events Center, which is the P A E C. As background information, Wilson Butler Architects has completed their study of potential sites for the new Performing Arts and Events Center as part of their phase one design work that has been contracted with them to perform. Wilson Butler Ventures recommends that the city build the new Performing Arts and Events Center in the same general location as the existing Marina Civic Center. Wilson Butler's evaluation process and findings are provided as information to, for your consideration. With that, to give a synopsis, when we commissioned the architects to begin this journey of determining what would be the adequate replacement for the existing civic, civic center, that we, we gave them several guidelines. One is that it would not be a single-use facility. It would be, number two, it would be self-supporting. And number three, it, where would be the place that it needed to be within the city? As a, as a primary investment, if we're going to be doing a hundred million dollar investment, what's the right location for that? The design team has been tasked to not only figure out what is the right capacity, capability of the facility, what's the right location of the facility, what's the cost of the facility, and do conceptual designs. And they owe that conceptual design back to this commission and to the citizens of Panama City in the late August, early September timeframe. With that, we gave them the map of the city and said, tell us where is the place to put this asset? What's the highest and best use location? With that, we also gave them thirteen locations across the city that were of size, and they considered not only the map of the city, but they considered the thirteen locations. With that, they used the GSA format, which is With that, they used the GSA format, which is a standardized format to use and consider sites for, site selections for various projects. From that, they narrowed the thirteen sites down to five, of which all five of those happened to be in the downtown of Panama City. There was site number six that was considered, which was at the mall, but due to the complexity of the mall's ownership and, and the complexity of what their future is and how they're going to redesign that space and getting all four mall owners on the same sheet of music, it would only delay the act, land acquisition process and delay this project for an indefinite period of time. So site number six was reduced, was eliminated. So the remaining five sites in the downtown were the current Marina location, number one, number two was the location where the current, the old federal courthouse was located, which is on the corner of Fourth and Government Street. The third location was the Beach Drive Park, currently owned by Mr. Kingston, that we lease from Mr. Kingston. Site number four was located at the area over at the Old Train Depot. And then site number five was the city block behind City Hall. So they evaluated all five of those sites, and from that, they narrowed it down to two as their recommendations to do exhaustive analysis on. With that, in your packet, you can see what they've done on that. But site, the, the two sites that they narrowed it down to was to the Marina site, where generally the current location is of the Civic Center, and then separately behind the City Hall. They did their analysis on those, and they felt that their assessment was that either of the locations would work. However, in terms of maximizing the experience and the ability to ensure that we already have the ownership of the land, it's a much easier acquisition issue to, to consider. Also, with the investment that's been made in the downtown by this commission with regard to the streetscapes, the location of the City Hall, the business facade improvement program, the infrastructure investment that's being done in the downtown, that they felt that the better site would be to be placed at the Marina. This is an important decision to be made for the guidance to be given to the architects because the design that they would conceptualize at either of the two locations would be different because of the environment that's around it. One's obviously surrounded by buildings, the other one is, has water adjacent to it. So with that, it's the recommendation that the site be approved for the new Performing Arts Center to be at the city Marina.
And just to be-
Come in.
Yeah, well, just to be clear, this is, well, I had a question for you earlier where I was like, why do we need to vote on it if it's already there, just kind of, you know? But you said basically so that there's guidance, because to the architects, that which of what we've already paid, we haven't finished that process.
That's correct.
Okay.
They will finish that process in late August, September timeframe, and then we'll pause and determine what's the future of the city.
Yeah, it, it would move on at all. Right. Okay, so the other thing is, I want to make it very clear and put on public record that we are not voting of any other activity that would be there. We're not voting on if the boat ramp is there or not there, we're not voting on, even if there's an outdoor theater there, we have not voted on the concept of that side of the Marina. We will, but we have not yet. So this is simply just saying, we're not sure how it would, you know, be situated on the Marina. It could be we close Government Street and we, you know, move over that way, we may acquire more property for parking or whatever.
That's right.
This is just to say, in that general location.
Yes, ma'am.
This is where, and the reason for that is that you explained to me that, you know, obviously the conceptual behind City Hall would look different than the conceptual over there. So I just, I just wanted to make that clear. Another thing I want to make clear is, there's been some conversation about cost to rehab the existing building, and we've gotten some numbers back on that, and can you give the community a little bit of sense of what that cost?
Yes, ma'am. So we, we asked our project management consultant, not the architect, but the advisors to this, to the city in this process, to evaluate the existing Civic Center, and in doing so, they evaluated it, and a full gut would be warranted. It would also have a, a lot of reconstruction required because of not only the damage of Hurricane Michael, but also how to facilitate the, the new way of, that artists like to perform. Currently, the, the old Civic Center, as Mr. Rader knows, is a very tunnel environment as opposed to how artists like to have it, which is much closer in audience configuration. I'm sorry.
More intimate.
Intimate setting, right. And with that, it would also be, you know, a single-purpose riser floor type of thing. They're estimating it with all that would be taken to do it.
And the, and the sea level rise, right?
And, and sea level, because we also have an issue with regard to a portion of the building is sitting in the flood zone designated by the FEMA maps, which is interesting, since they denied this whole thing, and yet it's sitting in, that's another story. So anyway, my whole point on that is to say that it's over sixty-three million dollars is their estimate of what it would take to put the Civic Center back.
Okay, then the other thing is, is that there's the insurance. How many, how much money will we collect?
So in our insurance settlement with FEMA, with regard to the over two hundred properties of the city, the settlement was for, in the aggregate, approximately seventy-three million dollars. Part of that was that our FEMA, our insurance provider, had a third-party provider that performed work on behalf of the city, and to that end, it was approximately four point two million dollars of work that they did, the temporary roof, the gutting of the facility.
To protect it.
To protect it, to do exactly what-
To do exactly what FEMA-
FEMA told us to do, right? So we did that, plus we also received six point five million dollars from the insurance company. So with that, the, the total was roughly ten and, ten and a half million dollars in aggregate value.
So when you, I just want to make sure people understand, when you say seventy, it's for all of our properties, that's not-
Every property across the city.
The Civic Center was around ten point five million.
That's correct.
Okay, and are there any FEMA dollars at all? Because that's another thing, is there's something out there saying we've got twenty million dollars of FEMA dollars?
No, there's not. That's what we were after. We were af, you know, the, the initial project estimate that was contemplated was eleven million dollars for the Civic Center. We went through the whole debate trying to prove a fifty percent rule, and again, the numbers that were submitted, three, almost three and a half years ago, were a different cost structure than they are now, right? But we need to be contemplating what the numbers were at that time. So with that, the rough estimate was eleven million. We were seeking thirty-three million to replace the Civic Center, not repair the Civic Centers. That's where that twenty-two million dollar differential comes in.
Just want to make sure people-
So now, what's important to note is, in every FEMA obligated project, that's what the total project amount is, and then you must deduct insurance from that. Because FEMA will not create double benefit to the, to that asset.
So that's where, just to make clear, we were going after like thirty-three million.
That's correct.
And we would have had to deduct the ten point five million.
Anyway.
Okay, so zero money from FEMA, and then I want to separate, and then I'm done.
Devin, do you want to add anything more to that?
No.
Okay.
You're doing good.
And then I just want to separate that there's two issues being talked about at the Civic Center. One is the rebuild of a new Civic Center, hiring architects and getting conceptuals and doing all the town hall meetings and all of that. The other part was money we spent on the risk and hope that we could prove to FEMA to get twenty-two million dollars more than what we were going to have for the citizens. And we're still waiting on some attorney fees with that, but I heard earlier, you know, I remember we, we approved like two different engineering firms, about a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy apiece, that, a hundred and seventy thousand. So I think a total was like three sixty-five.
Just for the engineers?
Just for the engineers.
Not, not including Nova Engineering and the attorney's fees, and that's right.
Right, and we'll get that number to everybody, but I just wanted to, there was a little bit of misunderstanding that spent one point two million on trying to convince FEMA, and that, I, I don't know, but right now, that's not, that was for the consultants that were working for to rebuild.
Architects.
Because our commitment was to rebuild.
That's correct.
Regardless of what FEMA came through for us or not, it, the, the issue will be, will we have the funding to build it, but that is not today.
That's correct.
And part of that was because they didn't have staff.
Right. And we didn't protect it enough by our insurance, putting four point something million dollars, I mean, it's, whatever.
Is there any steam coming out of my ears?
Yes. You gave a good speech, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
All right, that's all I had. Those were a lot of questions I saw that people were asking me, and I want to kind of open it up and get it out there.
Trying to share the same thing Monday morning with the manager, so go ahead.
So I have, I have two follow-up questions to that, but I kind of forgot too. Will now the conceptual plans change in their scope as a result of us not know, and now knowing that we will not get that money for FEMA? So what they bring us back in August, will that be affected or downscaled based upon that?
No, sir.
Okay.
They're mutually exclusive decisions.
Will they come to us with a funding mechanism that they recommend to building whatever it is they design?
Yes, not only that, but, you know, I mean, there's, the, the task that we gave the architects, we had no idea what this new facility was going to cost, and in order to go out and do the procurement under the RFQ process, we said that it could be a hundred million dollar project. That was it. And now, we have no idea what the number will ultimately be, but we had to give some scale for the architectural firms that were out there in the universe to be able to come and petition.
I think the scale was based on what they thought, how many seats.
So that was part of it. What we tasked them to do was to do a market analysis, to figure out what this community can support in the arts, how, what size venue it needs to be, what is the capability of that venue, and what, is it a flat floor, riser floor? Can you, now that they have new technology, you can actually convert flooring systems from flat to riser so that you still have that, and as Mr. Rader said, the intimate setting that you're looking for. Acoustically, how do we manage that? How do we manage it from a parking concept and, and consideration? There's a lot of factors that they're having to consider to get us to where what we think will be a premier performing arts and events center that actually is sustainable, financially supportable by itself.
That's the tough part.
That's the tough part, and that's why it's a very difficult problem. Now, what we did is we gave them, you know, they came in with their proposal, and it was roughly eleven million dollars for their architectural fees, and we said, no, we're not doing that. What we want to do is Phase One, which is the analysis first. We want to find out what's the right size, what's the right location, what's the right capability, what's the cost of it? What is it, conceptually, could it look like, at what site? That's all we're doing, and we're not going on to the extra ten million dollars until we figure out what we're doing, where the money's coming from, and is this what the citizens want?
And if we get to this point and we vote like, hey, this is what the citizens wanted, this is what the analysis is, we can always just preserve and protect the area where the Civic Center could be built in the future when there is funding.
That's right. Now simultaneously, we, you know, not knowing the FEMA decision that was going to be made last Tuesday, we already had moved forward with doing a design for, we contracted with an engineering firm to tell us, how do you correctly demo that building?
Right.
And that's a separate thing. That's just the engineering for it, it's not the dismantling of it at this point.
The second question I had was, is there FEMA funding available to put it back as-is, where is?
There, there is. It's, it would be a standard PA project.
I'm not saying that's the right decision.
No, right.
I just want, I just want to be-
Yeah, I want to get it out there, all the transparency.
And, and that's why I've, I've tasked the, our consultants to go back and look at what that cost differential would be.
Do we have even a clue, like?
Not yet.
Are they going to give us fifty million dollars?
No.
No.
It'll be a small-
It's, yeah, it's not a replacement as-is, whereas it is a repair, which would, which is less-
Right, well, that's what I'm saying, if it's estimated at sixty-three million dollars, and we have ten point five.
Well, I think that's-
And they would deduct our ten point five.
That's correct.
Yes.
From whatever they may end up with.
It'd still be interesting to know, though, if you know that information.
That's why it's important to have the task to our consultants to make that cost analysis.
I think one of the, the other things, I'll just put it out there, I mean, I appreciate what you said, ma'am, I think that was very timely, and yet it is very frustrating, you know, and I think for just our citizenry, you know, this does change things.
Oh, yeah.
It, it's, it is a drastic impact to what, to what we're able to do. I think we're committed to trying to do something good, but we will most likely at this point, unless something changes, not be able to do what we had initially thought we were wanting to do.
But we're not going to put Band-Aids on something that needs major surgery.
One hundred percent.
So, so I think that's what comes down to. I don't know what the right answer is now, and I know a lot of people ask me, like, well, what do you think, what do you think? I said, like, well, there's a lot of moving pieces to this, that I, I'm not sure right now what to do. I don't know whether we should put it back together, don't know whether to tear it down, do something different, take whatever, move stuff around. I don't know what to do. But I would certainly like to see the finished, you know, product, but I would also like our consultants to take in consideration the fact that we don't have this FEMA money when they do their, their analysis back on how we would fund it.
Right, and they're also looking at alternative funding sources, philanthropic sources, other grants that we might be able to seek out, other funding sources separate from what we were anticipating, which was a replacement for that twenty-two million dollar deficit that we-
Well, the great news is, is once we get to the end, which we've already approved, this phase that we've already approved, we should hopefully have documentation enough to go after these grants.
Exactly.
So that, we will have done a lot of legwork for that. I, I just want to, it seems like a lot of doom and gloom, I, I want to be really excited and remind everybody that the Martin Theater, and that's probably going to be twenty-two to twenty-four million dollars, we don't know.
A lot, we don't know yet.
Something like that. And a lot of people are concerned, like, oh, you're going through this process and you don't have the funding. No, we have, we have tied the funding to the Martin Theater from different various ways, and it's exciting to think we are, we should be going out to construction bid.
Next month.
Next month.
Yeah, the hundred percent plans will be coming back from DAG at, you know, beginning of next month, which will be next week, and as soon as we get that, it'll be presented to the commission for approval to move forward for the placement of the bid.
And for those that have been able to come to the town hall meetings, it is state-of-the-art, beautiful, it's going to be a huge asset to us, and I agree with the mayor, and I remodel a lot, so some things I think are worth it and some things I don't, but putting a Band-Aid even on the Martin would have been a terrible idea. I'd rather do the projects we can afford as we do them.
That's right.
And do them right than to just kind of, you know, throw things back together. So anyway, that's all I got.
If, I, I just want to make it quick, if I can. There's always the chance, like Josh said, there's, Commissioner Street said, there's moving pieces, there's also moving pieces with financing, and there's a chance of philanthropic donations from corporations. There's a lot of things we will seek. I can guarantee you, we got to do that, you know? And so with that being said, all we're voting on is, is the site.
Where we want to-
We're not voting on how many seats, you know, or anything like that.
We're not voting on the boat ramp?
We're not doing that stuff today.
And my understanding is it could even end up someplace different if we want to at the end of the conception.
I mean-
Well, that's right, too. I mean, after you, we've finished the contract with the architects and the project management consultants, which will finish up in September with Phase One, we'll have a deliberate pause and figure out where we're going to go, if we're going to commission them to move forward on Phase Two.
I would like to think that if we've spent the money to get expert opinion on this, that even if we don't have the capability of building it right now, that the money's not wasted because the plan is complete, that the site selection's complete, the conceptual would be complete, the study of the seats would be complete. I mean, I would like to think that there's some, some confirmation to the public that we're, we would be committed to that particular site.
Right, and with that kind of information, we can go out and seek other funding sources that's data-driven as opposed to just wishes. It would, to be clear, it is not the final set of drawings for the, the asset. That's a incredibly complex building, and it would take about a year and a half to two years to get architectures for that facility.
Judy, I know you stood up over there for a long time, I was going to tell you to sit. Come on down, I know you want to address us.
Come on down.
Your three minutes don't start till you get here, so don't run.
I just have a couple questions.
Yeah, no problem.
Only ten dollars. I'm just kidding.
Judy Stapleton, five forty-two South Anita Avenue, Panama City. First of all, thank you for your information on FEMA. They stink.
I'm going to write a book.
And I appreciate all the information you just gave us. I just had two questions. It seems to me that, beginning the discussion of the Civic Center, we were talking about a convention center and a civic center. I keep hearing performance art center now, and I don't know if we've changed to that.
Yeah, Ms. Judy, just to be clear, Civic Center is just an auditorium, right? This is a performing arts and events center, so that's where we'll have conference space and-
That hasn't changed.
That has not changed. We're still pursuing a multi-purpose flexible facility, not a single-purpose facility like we have.
Okay, that, that was one of my major questions. And the other one you just answered, once you vote on this, you have decided that it's going to be on the Marina, period, unless something comes up?
Unless something drastic happens, I guess, but yeah, that would be, we would be voting on the direction to go. I would like to say something to her, though, because of the, the consultants we have, they actually did kind of, did change the convention part of it to some extent, saying that our community would not be able to support like a huge convention center.
This is a concern that I think that many people have.
Okay.
And I don't have anything against having a convention center in Panama City, because I have heard all along that there are businesses in town that would rather have something in town.
Multi-use function, yeah.
But, how big?
Right.
There are many questions involved in that.
So they did take this down from what we considered a convention center to-
An event center.
Because of that, because that they did not believe we would be able to support a convention center.
And a true convention center would normally have a, an adjoining hotel to it, and that's not the case in this scenario.
But you have the one across-
It's not enough. We do, but that's one of the attributes of a convention.
Need a lot more rooms, just like the Opera Land Hotel.
Like everybody else, I see the size, I see the proposed location, I see what's being presented, and it concerns me greatly. So I'll keep listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's why I couldn't answer your email.
Okay.
It's too long.
And that actually gave me a little confidence when they said, hey, you can't support a huge convention center. Because I was like, well, then it's not just about building and numbers, you know? It's, it's what really is best for our community or what we can support.
Hey, David.
Good morning, David Smith, ten seventy East Carolina Boulevard. We're about to vote on the site selection for the new performing arts center. And I'm having a little trouble making sense of this site selection for a number of reasons. We had town hall meetings about, about it. And Wilson Butler, I asked the question, what's the minimum footprint? And they said, ten acres. We don't have ten acres there. We have nothing close to ten acres there. There's not ten acres anywhere near downtown. And how do you move five hundred cars in a half hour's time? Because if you've got sixteen hundred seats or three thousand seats, you've got to be able to get cars in and out. Think about other centers that can do that. Secondly, we're, we're considering rebuilding right on the water so that the next storm, we could see a surge hitting that building. We got hit once, do we, you know, once burned, twice shy. Do you make the same mistake again? Thirdly, we're looking at ten years of construction downtown. By the time we finish the streetscapes, moving block by block, we're going to be turning around and doing the Marina and, and the new performing arts center. And fourthly, most importantly, this project has not served the blighted areas of this city. A hundred million dollar investment in Glenwood, in Millville, in the downtown north would be a game changer for any of those areas. And so I ask you to consider, as you vote, those factors. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I do know that one of the things Wilson, I didn't hear that ten acres, and obviously we have a nice sized Civic Center right now, and we've done parking before. But one of the things they mentioned was maybe building, because of the resilience, building up and putting parking underneath the Civic Center.
Yes, yes, or a parking garage structure, right.
Thanks, David.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Nick Beninati, twelve nineteen West Eighth Street. It's hard sometimes to spend years and money and time on something and eventually realize you might need to pivot away from those sunk costs. I don't support building an indoor, large fifty, seventy-five, hundred million dollar building on that site at all. I don't think the city can afford it. I think if you even find mechanisms to afford it, it's not the right thing to spend that money on. That's a great location for an outdoor amphitheater. You could spend a small fraction of the cost, you could probably have it ready in less than eighteen months. And it wouldn't change the site in any way that prevent you later on from putting that huge investment in if you wanted to. If, if you tried the outdoor amphitheater for seven or eight years and it wasn't as successful as you wanted, you could always go build. Our city has a lot of just fundamental issues that need to be addressed, and they're not getting addressed quickly enough. And I can't see how putting seventy-five, hundred million dollars into that site makes sense when you would most likely have a building that resembles the old one where you're not utilizing the water views. It would just be a box by the water. As opposed to an outdoor amphitheater where people would see water in three directions, it would be a fairly unique amphitheater. It would attract good talent, the people that go to those types of shows. They're used to traveling, they won't mind driving a few hours. If they're at the beach already, they'll certainly won't mind driving an hour to come see a good, good show. The kinds of performers that are kind of right below the top, top performers, they're used to playing out in their amphitheaters, it's successful, it's their business model. I think it would do very well. I think that people who attend those types of shows would be good patrons downtown. They're the type of people that spend a lot of money, go out to eat, go to bars. I, I just, I think spending any more money toward a hundred million dollar indoor facility at that site is a mistake, and that I wish you would pivot away from that and change plans.
Thank you, Nick.
It is contemplated there would be an outdoor.
Yeah, no.
I don't, I don't think we've really said it's going to be a hundred million, but I agree with you. We've heard that figure.
Might be a window in the new one.
Well, I would definitely.
We've heard that figure, but I agree with you on an outdoor.
Yeah.
But there's one in the plans.
One hundred percent consensus among people is an outdoor theater.
Yep.
I'm like, everybody.
Go ahead, John.
All right, John Katie.
Hey, John.
Yeah, you know, thirteen, uh, East Fourth Street. We all know the old adage, okay? When you're in a hole, quit digging, all right? And Mayor, I appreciate what you said about FEMA and, and everything else. And you probably won't hear me say this very often, but I don't really blame the commission on this. I blame the city manager, okay? I spent thirty-three years working for the federal government. From the day FEMA came in here, I could have told you how FEMA was going to perform. I could have told you there were people from Katrina that still hadn't had their cases, uh, G, excuse me, adjudicated so many years later, all right? We need to learn to live within our means. And it's a sad thing, but we have many examples in this community where people were damaged by that storm, and they've had to deal with it. And they're worried about getting their house rebuilt, maybe with Band-Aids, all right? They're not going out and hiring architects and consultants to design a new front lawn for them, all right? It's sad, we got hit by a storm. But this FEMA thing, like you said, there's a new crisis every six days with FEMA. And there's a political element that's involved in it. And if you think FEMA in this environment is going to give a rats about North Florida right now, then you're crazy, all right? That's a polit, that's a federal political environment. And I can tell you that from day one, we should have realized that and moved forward with something for this community, all right? So one other thing, I would like to see, and you can consider this under statute one nineteen, public records request, official public records request, a list of all the money that we received so far to do things with the Civic Center, all the money that we were offered by FEMA up, up to this point, or any other agency, and, and monies that we've received, money that we've spent so far on consultants or any other source, and where that money came from, and whether it was borrowed or whether it came out of the general fund or something else. Again, public records request, all right? And I request that it be done at no expense to individuals because it's of great public interest. You can put it on the website, should have it readily, readily available. As one of our great vice presidents said, it should have been in a lockbox, right? And so I'd like to see it in a lockbox and make sure it's not being spent on something else. Couple points of, points, okay? The four point five million dollars that went into mitigating further damage would not be removed from what FEMA would give us.
It would.
Okay, well, we disagree on that, but that's, that's one thing.
Thank you, John.
Okay, so, uh, one, one other point. My understanding is the contracts that we currently have with the consultants are cost contracts. So if you, if you told, even though they have Phase One and Phase Two, if you told them stop working today, there would be some shutdown cost, but we wouldn't be responsible for the full cost for the next two months until we decided what to do. They're cost contracts, right?
We got, we got the rules, you know the rules.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say two things. One, um, one, I think what John's asking for, Jan, you and I have had conversations about getting that. I know you're working on that. Any updates on getting to that specific report that has the information that John's talking about? That was one.
Uh, we're still working on that.
Do you have any kind of?
Specific to the Civic Center. You never had asked anything specific to the Civic Center.
Well, no, I was talking about just in general, seeing what we've gotten in on our F-one sheet, what we have spent to date on those and what the funding sources are.
Oh, sure, I have, I have that at any time.
So Josh has asked that, and then I've asked about the Civic Center, which I know we've gotten some numbers in, but we want to make sure everything is.
That's right.
Is perfectly right, and I always post that stuff. Like, there, there's nothing to be held back from that before, hey, Mr. Henry, before you talk. The option here is that we have an option of Site One or Two. And that was going to be the next thing I was going to bring up because I, I really, kind of along with the community, I kind of really got stuck on the idea that maybe it's not the best place after all, you know? They built that in the fifties and there were different, I mean, originally, when you look at those original documents, I mean, it had all kinds of retail, all kinds of stuff, which nobody wants that anymore. It, so things have changed a little bit since they built it there. So I, I mean, I, I really got kind of stuck to the idea of Option Two because I like the idea of drawing more people more downtown instead of just at that one area. How much difference was Site One and Two? Like in the sense of the ranking, like they were both pretty close, right?
They were close.
Okay, I just didn't know if there was any, you know, any, one, one thing that was just so much stronger than.
The, uh, in the analysis that they provided of the two sites, when they were comparing the two sites, was that the site behind the city hall would be more of a one and done type of thing. They didn't assess that there, first of all, they did not assess that people would feel connected with the whole ambiance of what's being created with regard to Harrison Avenue and the streetscape and all of that, even though, even though Grace Avenue District is underway. They said it would be more of a one and done type of thing, that people would come, some would come for meals before, some would stay after, but the preponderance would leave, not unlike what we had at the old Civic Center, where there was nothing for people to really do afterwards.
So I would be interested if we took, because we, I know now we have a continuing contract with Urban Designers, which we never had before, the streetscapes and all that. If we could consult with one of them, and I don't mean consult like a study and all that, I mean, simply just make a phone call to like Victor Dover and say, do you agree or disagree? Because that's kind of a, to me, it seems like if we're thinking about the future, that Site Two would actually promote the growth more downtown than, than the first one. But I don't, and then it leaves a lot of options at this, at the.
But I think we've established the fact that this is not in stone. So.
We're just trying to give the site to what, to the architects on how to do their conceptual designs.
And until we find out other things that may go along with what we, what we want to put over there with Mr. Terrell, different stuff that we've talked about, I think we need to keep that option open, and then if we have to drop back and punt, we will. So, I mean.
Two, two things I wanted to add. So one was in the, in the plan with this particular consultant, there is an amphitheater design that has no building associated with it. And that goes to my comment to Mark and why I was saying that I want them to make sure that we're taking into account what funding we have, because that may be what they come back with in August. It is one of the conceptuals that is just an amphitheater and an outdoor park. So that was one. The second thing, and I do want to point this out, so I've gotten to personally work with FEMA over these last four years managing projects myself. There's one difference between this storm and any other storm that existed, and that's the four twenty-eight process, which is what Mark and the team had been pursuing. And so I, I, while, while, yes, there's always hindsight's twenty-twenty, there's a lot of things we could have done different. I'm sure Mark's got a whole list of a pain file of things he would, he would change. The four twenty-eight process failed, and it failed based upon FEMA's implementation of that policy, which was meant to expedite our recovery. It actually lengthened it. And so as a result, FEMA has pulled back from that program, and they're no longer offering it in the way that they offered it to our community four years ago. And so I do want to kind of put that into context of just someone that's had to manage this myself, and it is, it is a frustrating process, and it has not been easy. So it is disappointing. You know, I don't think that we should bank on FEMA funding from this point forward.
From this point forward.
I don't think that should be in our considerations. And so, and that kind of goes to our architects and our designers to make sure that we're actually taking into account what we can afford, what we can build, and what we can execute. Because dreams are great, but it's better to actually see something.
Nobody fought harder than Mark and the staff for that. And had FEMA approved us, had one more judge said, yes, you would have been the hero, and the staff would have been the hero. We did a risk, we're business people, we did a risk with a huge, what we thought would be a huge, you know, payout. And it didn't work, we shifted gears and kind of like Nick said, and there's other ways to, to skin the cat.
And I read the report. We were one point four million dollars of an HVAC system from getting that full amount.
Yeah.
That's ultimately what it came down to, is correct, Nevin?
Yes, the, the decision that the city manager and staff and commission made to pursue that additional replacement cost was reasonable. I don't think, I think it had been a derelict of duty not to pursue it because it's not like you're asking for a favor. The city commission was asking for what it was entitled to under the law, and we did not prevail because of one judge. One judge decided to vote with, to deny rather than vote with the dissenting judge, which would have been to Grant.
Just like that.
And it is, it was all, whether or not the HVAC system got wet because of the storm. That's what it all boiled down to.
That's right.
And it was working the day before, so.
The city had all these expert testimonies, had manufacturer specifications. But, um, uh, there was one judge who disagreed.
Go ahead, Mr. Henry. Is this about the performing arts center?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Walter P. Henry, six fourteen Maple Avenue, Panama City, Florida. I love what you said at the beginning about FEMA, uh, all that swell. I just wonder why you was saying that. I hope that every commissioner, our heart was, was filled with the peoples of Bay County, Panama City, that how we feel when we are turned down. We have that same feeling that when we are turned down, and y'all are our commissioners. And, uh, and you showed that point, so we need to show that point to watch. If FEMA showed you, you could shoot, it's time for y'all to show us some of that love and kindness. But we are, commission the city Marina, I, I think that's, I, I, everybody got their point where it should be. I think, I think where it's, where it's at is fine. I don't care where you build it. If you go build a large center, don't think behind City Hall, you go have, you ain't going to have no parking.
And we'd have to.
Parking go be a place, a place for, I don't care where you put it, you have a place about being where you go, where you go feel folk parking. Folks don't have to go a long distance. And I think that, that what they made the decision, I think it should be built right there. And we don't understand the storm. Panama City have been blessed for years. It was our return.
Mm-hmm.
We did not unders, we don't, we don't understand that. We saw others, but they had hit home. Then we could open our eyes and see. I don't care what you build, nothing you can build in this world. If God wanted down or wanted torn, it's coming down. And I know that things have changed down through the years, construction have changed, building have changed. They have found ways to do, try to build things better, that they say that, that the wind will not disturb nothing. That God has, that you build, whoever built it, who makes it, that God will not, he will, whatever he wants to do, he does that. So we need to understand that, so. So show y'all love and kindness, and y'all turn the mercy toward the peoples of Bay County.
Here, a motion on ten I.
I'd like to move approval. Second emotion, man.
Discuss, any more discussion?
What if we don't want it? What if we don't necessarily know if we want it on Site One, maybe Site Two?
This is not in stone.
Oh, hello.
Come on.
We need your name and number, please.
Um, I know, I know you, I know you. Michael Mays, five forty-two East Fourth Street. My, I'm more of a technical nerd sort of person, so mine's more around, my question's more around the actual prioritization that they provided and sort of the evaluation. We're talking a lot about FEMA, and if you look at the scoring, it counts for one percent of the prioritization and the evaluation compared to things like, if you look at public green, vegetation, view and visibility, adds up to about seven percent. So as you're looking at and making this decision on the sites, I'm not trying to say where it should be. I just question the idea that parking and, you know, vegetation and public green, when we're going to improve all that stuff, should be weighted anywhere near FEMA or look at, from an insurance perspective, we talked insurance, I don't even see it on this prioritization. No, I don't know the details of it, that's not where I'm at. But I think that that carries kind of some, it, it deserves more scrutiny, so.
So what's your opinion?
I would wait and dig under the hood of this prioritization and get more data. Hospitality, um, you see some fives. I am an expert in the hospitality industry. I wouldn't agree that there are fives. So I think you do need some people to get involved to really scrutinize this. So I, I just wouldn't, the prioritization and what they've done doesn't mean my sniff test. I would, if y'all know stuff that I don't know, absolutely, but it makes me nervous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well put. Oh, boy.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor.
There's another person.
Craig's coming up.
Oh, come on up.
Come on up, Craig.
Try to be quick, I may go to the plane. Craig Zar, thirteen oh two Cherry Street. First of all, I can definitely appreciate your frustration with FEMA and the passion that you have. Also, I very, it was very nice to see that the public input today actually made a difference on one of the other zonings or annexations. And I really like how you just kind of step in and help explain things in a way that some of us less technical people can understand.
Now I'm in your book.
But, but, you know, we're talking about the site selection, I agree. I, I really don't think that the Marina is the best place, but that's for others to decide. And I know the boat, boat ramp is not being voted on, but the talk of the amphitheater and everything, it kind of does involve the boat ramp. And I, the only thing I would like to say is I know there's plans for Snug Harbor to come online, fifty-two parking places. But if, has anybody added up all of the parking in all of the Panama City boat ramps? I don't know if you've been by Church Avenue lately, it's down to about seven parking places.
Yeah, that one's real tough.
Since they filled the whole lot with portable buildings. We have, what, thirteen at Carl Gray?
No, we got a lot more Carl Gray.
Thirteen to twenty, I think, is what they listed on, on.
I don't know about Carl Gray.
Yeah, I think it was thirteen on the site plan that I saw, but I've seen as many as twenty listed on the sites for boat ramps in the county. But we're looking at, you know, over a hundred at the Panama City Marina. But we're looking at, you know, over 100 at the Panama City Marina. So if you replace, there were 46 there in the rain on July 3rd, and the parking lot was still quite empty. There's four, or five or six rows at five just from the ramp straight out to Government Street, not including anything there, plus what is being taken up by all the construction material, but, or construction.
Oh, you're talking about the Civic Center parking slash shared with the boat ramp?
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, you know, we've all seen, it, it used to overflow up into where PCMI has their little playground and, you know, over into Hawksnutt's parking. So we know the demand is there. And all I would like to ask is if something happens to the City Marina boat ramp, and it's moved to Snug, that we do a comparison of capacity for capacity? Because we are at capacity now where we are at. And if we cut from 75, say, to 100 places at the Marina, and we cut it down to 50 over at Snug, that's going to be a drastic cut for the people of this community.
Totally agree with you.
And we need to make sure.
We'll make sure that we've got more space available.
Yeah, because, you know, launching a boat is one thing.
Thank you.
It's useless if you can't park the truck in the trailer.
We'll try to have something that there's a staging area too, not like that abortion that was created down there back in the 80s, because it's.
Craig, to your point, even at Snug, you know, Mark's already ahead of us thinking about if we could lease property or acquire more property for more parking. I mean, so we, I mean, we.
There's some across 98, but that's.
Oh, that would be, no, yeah, yeah, no, children and all that.
You would have people that overflow there and try to cross the road.
Go ahead, Les.
Leslie Fontaine, 305 Bunkers Cove Road. I have a question. Is it imperative that you vote on a site selection today? There's been questions raised by Jenna about maybe the Civic Center down on the Marina may not be the best place for it. Do you have to vote today? Is it imperative? Are there, what would happen if you got more information, just as the other gentleman said, that maybe the Marina is not the correct place for it?
Well, and I'm not necessarily saying it's not, but what I am saying is if they're two both acceptable, and we've got, you know, boaters, and we've got outdoor theater, and, I mean, no matter what, with an outdoor theater and everything, I mean, the parking is still, like, that, that's, we're gonna have to have a parking garage. I mean, anything besides what's there right now, we need some, and, and just for all.
If it's gonna be $100 million for a building, that's a lot of money, and.
I meant outdoor theater.
We haven't said, that's been floated around.
Okay, well, I don't really care how much it is. I'm just saying, I'm not real sure why the need is there to vote today. If, if you're looking at another piece of property that might be better, and maybe you don't have all the information, why can't you postpone this vote?
I don't want to take up your time.
All we have to do is vote no.
Yeah. So I told Mark about, Mark and I discussed this before the meeting, and I don't want to take up your time because you're on time.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you a question today. The other question I want to know is, we bring up the Martin Theater. I know it has 500 seats. The insurance money, if any, is left from the Civic Center. Do we have the funding to finish the Martin Theater? And if we don't, can we, we do have the money to totally finish the Martin Theater. Is that correct?
Yes. We have $14 million that we know right now. We're waiting for the final design and cost estimate to come in for the Martin Theater.
Okay, if the cost estimate, estimate comes in more than that, and we have leftover funds from the Civic Center, and we're gonna be sitting on them, can we use that insurance money to go towards the Martin Theater where we could get something finished?
Yes.
Which is our goal, is keep this thing going.
Now, I'm gonna quit lecturing. I just had to get that in there, so, okay.
Okay, so Mark and I talked about this before, about maybe delaying it if we, if we needed to. And I did want to address the parking, even if it's just the outdoor theater that we're all, every, a lot of people want.
Well, not everybody.
We have to address the parking regardless of where we.
The visioning process was very strong.
I was at all those.
Yes, it was very strong. It wasn't a before or, or this instead of that, okay? I'm just saying, we know that, we know that the citizens don't want just a boat ramp, okay? They want to have some outdoor theater experience and all that. So regardless, the parking is not going to be the way it is today, regardless. So, and of course, and once again, I'm gonna give credit to Mark because he's talked about, you know, we can acquire some property, build a parking garage. We could put the bottom tall enough and big enough for boat parking.
Right.
Under anything. So, anyway, what my point was, is it's just two weeks, really. Like, it's a little bit frustrating because we've been working on this process for a long time. So you asked what the need was to vote quickly. There's not a need to vote quickly. It's just that, it's just that here we are.
But I, I just, my personal opinion is I wouldn't be spending money on looking at a facility at that place and then come back later and say, oh, wait, we're gonna change it. Because you know how all that's gonna go.
I agree. I agree with that 100%.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor.
So can we just, can we motion to, oh, there was a motion.
Yeah, there was a motion on the floor.
To be clear, what we're doing is we're giving guidance to the architects to come up with a conceptual. We want them to come up with a conceptual at both locations.
I just don't want to pay them more.
That's what we would be doing. So what we're telling them is where to do the conceptual drawings.
Well, I'd feel more comfortable voting on a, possibly voting on another site. So I'd either rather just.
Well, there's a motion on the floor for the site that we've got. Is, did someone make a motion?
I made a motion.
All right, is there, was there?
That's because you asked for a motion.
Was there, yeah, was there a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there was a motion and second, so.
But if we vote no, is that slowing the process down?
What do we tell the architects?
But it's just two weeks. I mean, we can come back in two weeks, right?
Two weeks? What are we looking at?
That's, that's, that's fine, but I'm just saying, what the purpose of this was not to say this is, I mean, the purpose was, yeah, we, we'd like to put it here at the Marina. They did their GSA-approved process, and Mike and I have talked several times about this. And it's various screening criteria that they used, but at the end of the day, they were consistent and had their application of all of that. And their assessment, because they do this all the time, is that the best site would be the Marina. What they're needing is to know which, essentially is, which site do they need to do all this exhaustive conceptual designs on relative to the new building based on the market analysis that we did?
Then I'm definitely probably not comfortable yet. I would rather, because I want to make sure that that other site.
Come on up. You know I gotta leave at 10:15, so come on. I know.
We're gonna make all kinds of decisions while you're gone, man.
Great. And I'm sorry that we have, that's the only plane out, but.
Hey, listen, I get it.
Go ahead.
James Fontaine, 410 South Palo Alto in the Cove. Lived here all my life. Born and raised. And I'm confused here. I really don't understand why you're even trying to decide where the hell to put this thing when you don't have the money to build it.
Well, you gotta have.
Why would you do that?
Because you have to have a plan to be able to get money to do it. You just can't go in there without having all of that.
You're gonna spend $1.2 million to plan for something that costs $100 million?
There we go with the wrong numbers again.
Well, I mean, I'm just going by what people have said.
Well, I don't want to get in an argument with you.
And another thing I don't understand, why is it a building that, that is used maybe two or three times a month at the most that I've lived here?
That's not wrong.
It's just used more than that, James. It really is. Honestly, it is. There's a lot of dance recitals, a lot of revivals.
And we're making it multipurpose, so it'll be used even more.
I'm serious, there is.
Guys.
There is. But there's more than two, three times a month, trust me.
I mean, I, I don't want, I don't want y'all to think that I'm not, I'm not against the thing. I really don't care, be honest with you. But what I really'd like to have is a Marina with a boat ramp that I've used all my life living here. And all of a sudden, you're telling me because of this building, I can't have that Marina anymore?
Oh, no.
I'm not telling you that.
And that's what I'm hearing though, guys. That's what everybody in the Cove that I talk to are talking about.
Yeah, I know where that gets started.
Well, they're not talking about it on Frankfurt.
And I'll tell you right now, I'll be totally against, totally against taking away the Marina and the boat ramp.
Yeah, this has nothing to do with that.
I'm sorry. I throw a joke in here.
That's how I feel. And that's how my friend.
Well, it doesn't. That's not true.
I, thank you.
I appreciate you, buddy.
Okay, let's, let's, let's vote, please. We got a motion on the floor, and there was a second, so call a roll.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
No.
Commissioner Halagus.
No.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes, knowing that we can change it.
Motion passes three to two.
But Mayor, you don't want to draw one concept and have to pay for it. Now it's done.
Yeah, I do. Because I know that's where it's gonna end up.
Is that it? Oh, yeah, that's right, you're leaving.
We'll probably get a damn ticket on the way.
Mic drop. Bye, Mayor.
That's good.
Sorry, thank you. Appreciate everyone showing up here today and being part of the community and being part of what goes on in Panama City. Thank you. I'm gonna pass the gavel to Mr. Street.
Yeah, it's not over.
Be safe, Greg.
Unless you just want to spend the rest of your time at our convention meeting.
We're gonna, we're gonna take just a five-minute reset, bathroom break.
Well, it's.
Get CRA after that, too.
It has two items?
But you want to do that?
Yeah, do three items and then do a break between that and the CRA.
Okay. All right, we'll continue, we'll continue.
I'm sorry. My bad. CRA for 10J.
So item 10J.
All right, so item 10J, consideration to approve amendment to task order number 20010.
Yes, sir. So this is a consideration to approve the amendment that, number two, to the task order number 22-010 to the SRF Lead Engineering Services contracts that are with Mont McDonald, Florida LLC, as well, that has been approved already in October 12, 2021, for a $300,000 maximum amount-based bid based on time and material. And then change also, change order number two to task order number one for the state revolving fund lead engineering services contract that we have with Panhandle Engineering Incorporated, which is approved October 12, 2021 in the amount of $300,000 for both, again, based on time and material. And in a budget, and thirdly, a budget amendment resolution 2022-0726.3 in the amount of $800,000 to cover the total amounts for the lead engineering services contracts with Mont McDonald and Panhandle Engineering, including the original two task orders, amendment number one and amendment number two for both of those engineering firms. So in essence, what we have is, as you know, the, the state revolving fund is $113 million that the city was able to secure. It's essentially allowing us to rebuild our water and sewer lines, our lift stations, our, in even the streets where we damaged or tear up roads in, in the construction effort. With that, it's also very favorable in that we have a 25% forgiveness on that loan as well as near 0% interest rates over a 20-year period once we begin payments in four more years. With that, what this does is this allows us to continue to give task orders to Panhandle Engineering and Mont McDonald to continue their lead engineering responsibilities over all of the project engineers that we have, of which we have nearly a dozen engineering firms working for us. And they're managing each one of these. They're reviewing the submitted drawings to make sure they're in congruence with the system and that we don't create over pressures in some areas and under pressures in others. With that, it's my recommendation that we go forward in, and this is, again, a time and material. This is really giving us the ability to tap in and task order the engineering firms to continue the work that they've been tasked to do.
This is a public forum. Say no comment, motion.
To not elect to move approval.
For all three components.
Yeah, for all three years.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, the motion is to approve amendment two to Mont McDonald's contract, amendment two to Panhandle, and then the budget resolution.
So they can continue on.
That's correct.
So we've got first and second.
All right, vote.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Motion passes 40.
Commission has adopted resolution 2022-0726.3, a resolution providing for the amendment of the approved fiscal year 2122 budget for the accounting of task orders for state revolving fund lead engineer program management plan.
So the next item is item 10K, which is the consideration of approval of six selected engineering firms for Phase One of Project Restore for the areas Millville, which is a community disaster block grant disaster recovery grant, as well as Area A2, which was also a community development block grant for disaster recovery. In the aggregate, those are nearly $40 million that's being granted for us to be able to do the water and sewer in these areas. To that end, this is a follow-up to the negotiations that were approved in May 27, 2022 at the commission, discommission meeting. The city advertised a request for qualifications on April 6, 2022, and received six responses from qualified engineering firms on April 29 of this year. The Project Restore Millville and Area A2 Evaluation Panel met on Friday, May 13, and to determine the best qualified engineers for this project, the panel discussed RFQ proposal, and after careful consideration, all the firms, of all the firms, the panel assigned each firm an area within each of those two respective grant locations. With that, it's the recommendation that we move forward and award and approve the six engineering firms and their contracts for Project Restore. And again, we're very grateful to the governor and Department of Economic Opportunity, Director Eagle, for their support of this community's restoration of the infrastructure.
I will move approval.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Now, we have a motion approval. Any public comment?
Keep the ball rolling.
Let's vote.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Motion passes 40.
Thank you, staff, for keeping that ball rolling.
So we have one additional, which is item 10L, which is a consideration of the public-private partnership request for proposal responses for the development of the property located at 1300 Beck Avenue, 1306 Beck Avenue, and 1309 Chestnut Avenue. As background information, a request for proposal was issued on November 22, 2021, seeking qualified applicants to lead a mixed-use development on the city-owned property at each of those three addresses. Two applicants submitted responses to the city, which have been subsequently reviewed by GIA consultants, Dover Coal Partners, along with city staff. Upon review, it was determined that the public-private proper partnership program must be revised, and a subsequent solicitation should be crafted with that. It's my recommendation that we thank the two bidders, but respectfully reject each of those proposals. Allow us to go back and reformulate the P3 program to be considered by this commission and approved by the commission prior to solicitation of future partnerships.
So I'd just like to add, so Mark and I have spent a lot of time talking about specifically the program. This was the first one that we did. I thank the two applicants that put in there. I think, I do want to make sure that we reach out directly to them with the new proposals.
Yes, sir.
Specifically, I think some of the things that we've learned is, you know, trying to shore up the financing documentation that we ask for, as well as being more specific with what we want.
Yes, sir.
So we've got now some data that, that we've gotten from our consultants in regards to economic analysis, as well as a review by Dover Coal Partners. So I think we've got a good step to get this back out, and I'd like to see it go as quickly as it can with those guidelines and parameters put in place.
Good. So. Yeah, Mr. Street, I'd just add that, you know, these proposals, all well intentioned, they were looked at by each of those, Dover Coal as well as GAI, and they did not look at it from anything else other than, yes, a hotel would be suitable. Yes, residential would be great. Yes, retail would be great. All of those things are attributes, and they're consistent with what our Dover Coal plans are, the neighborhood plans, but also what we're striving to do economically. But it's very clear that we need to go back and craft a better P3 program.
So what you're saying is we're gonna go, we are gonna reach back out to these people that put their time and effort.
That's right.
And tell them some additional things that we need. I will say that, you know, the, you can tell the, the group that has been a part the, the group that has been a part of our visioning process that's in here. And I just want to make sure we give great, you know, given the feedback, they need to maybe put it back in again.
That's right.
And I think what they, I think, you know, in looking between both, both proposals, that was the one that was closest, I think, to what we, we desire. So I'd, I'd like to see us move as quickly as possible on that, even though we're, we're trying to kind of clear the table to reset. You know, I, I definitely didn't have any angst towards that project specifically, so. But it is a public comment, so.
David Smith, 1070 East Carolina Boulevard. So as you vote, and if this goes back to be revised, I ask the, that on the revision of the RFQ, that we complete the zoning process, get our zoning in, in place, that was voted on a year ago. And so there is no question about the zoning for this new P, for this P3 partnership for those three properties, because as you recall, there was some, it was not clear what the zoning was. And it's still not clear what the zoning is for, for that area. So please, let's get the zoning done before we reissue that RFQ. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, David. Thanks, David. I agree.
I'd love to see that get across the finish line. No pressure, Michael.
So with that, it's the recommendation that we reject the, respectfully reject the proposals and recraft the P3 program.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to reject. I'll make that motion.
Second motion.
All right, vote.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Motion passes 40.
Mayor Protem Street, before you hit the gavel, I'd like to backtrack and read a resolution title. It's resolution number 20220726.3, a resolution providing for the amendment of the approved fiscal year 2122 budget for the accounting of task orders for State Revolving Lead Engineer Program Management Plan. Thank you.
All right. Well, can we consider meeting adjourned?
We have a CRA meeting.
CRA meeting to follow immediately after. Let's take a five-minute recess, and then we'll come back.